Good evening. Thank you all. Welcome to the Operation and Budget and Physical Affairs Committee Meeting. I would like to call this meeting to order in November seventeen, twenty twenty-one, Operation and Budget Affairs Committee meeting. I am Belinda Queen, the Chair of the Committee and the District Six Representative of Prince George's County Board of Education. Thank you to everyone for being here this evening. Okay, adoption of November seventeen, twenty twenty-one meeting agenda. May I have a motion to approve the November seventeen, twenty twenty-one meeting agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Okay, the approval of October twentieth meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve the me- well, have you had all had a chance to review?
Yes ma'am.
Then may I have a motion to approve the October twentieth, twenty twenty-one meeting minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. At this time, we're gonna move to public comments. We have no registered public speakers for this evening, so we're moving right, right along, you guys. So we're gonna move on to three point O, discussion and action items. So our action items and discussions for today is gonna be about the Operation and Budget Work Sessions, Public Hearings, and the agenda for the budget discussion. I'm just gonna open discuss, start the discussion, you guys. We have to pick a location to have these workshops and I was sent a couple of suggestions. I know the Vice Chair also suggested that we have one which will be by Zoom and two in person. So I have one suggestion of Central High School, which is Central. I know we normally do them Central, North, and South. And because Central High School has been rebranded and remodeled, you know, like going on, I think it would be a great opportunity for the Board of Ed to be able to see the school, be able to visit the school and see what's going on, and it is Central, so I would like to suggest that school. I don't know, North or South, I'm not sure if anyone have any suggestions. I do, I believe we did Northwestern the last time we was in person and was it Crossland?
Yeah, I have no memory. Yep, Crossing Northwest.
Yeah, and we've recently, we've been recently North, Northwestern, High Point last couple of years, Flowers. Flowers is always a good location and Fairmont Heights, of course, is a new building, has a great auditorium, probably pretty good for everyone and good travel to there. I love the idea of going to Central. That's wonderful to, the chance to see the renovations, so I totally support, support that.
Okay, did anybody else have any other suggestions? Because we need to make a suggestion for two locations. We can have the third one. As far as being on Zoom, which will get more people who don't have the opportunity to come and come out, to be able to come out and voice their opinion, and I think that's a great idea to keep it that way, because I think social media and Zoom has been a benefit for many residents who couldn't make it to Upper Mobile, couldn't make it to any of the facilities, and now we giving them an opportunity where wherever they at, whether if they have to be at work or at home or wherever they have to be at, babysitting somewhere, working, that they still able to call in and be able to speak on behalf of our scholars and their students and the community. So I do like that opportunity. I know you suggested Fama Heights. Fama Heights is a good idea, because we have a listed for District One, we got Law and High Point. I believe we had one at Higher Point before. District Two, we have Eleanor Roosevelt. I don't remember us being at Eleanor Roosevelt at all.
I, I agree. I, I don't recall doing any public meetings there in the last few years.
Right, I do remember.
We have before, not, not maybe like twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen, maybe?
Yeah, I think that was before us. I do remember us doing Fama Heights and Flowers for something, but I just don't remember us doing Eleanor Roosevelt. I do remember Northwestern.
Have we done Duval recently?
Huh?
Have we done Duval?
No, I don't recall.
Was it Duval or Park, was it Parkdale? I know, was it High Point and Parkdale? And then when we first got on board.
Events at Parkdale.
It was part of one with the water problem.
I know you, you didn't let that go.
I wanna wash my hand, and that's cool. I still can't let that go.
So in the interest of, in the interest of spreading stuff out, Chair Queen, maybe, like you said, we do the, the one on Zoom. We do one more toward the south point of the county and then one further north. So I'm hearing Duval, I'm hearing Eleanor Roosevelt.
Be a great one then, okay.
I'm hearing Duval and Eleanor Roosevelt.
Well, Eleanor Roosevelt, we can, could be one of them. So them are three suggestions. Essential, Essential, I think Essential to everyone, part of being Central County, so I think Do, Do, Central, Central to everyone. So it will be either Duval or Eleanor Roosevelt. So we're looking to see which one and will be able to accommodate us. And if for some reason Central is not able to accommodate us, I, we can, I think it was mentioned Fama Heights, we can look at, because both of them are close by each other, since Fama Heights are really not even that far apart.
Yep.
For real. Yeah, because I think they're the only high schools that I know that are close by for us to be able to do that. Unless we do it at PG Community College, but I really don't like to park in there, to be honest. So what do you guys think? Anybody else have any of them great?
So is, is the, is the go here to hone in on two schools or have a few options that we can reach out to?
So we hone, we kinda like did hone in on Central High School and if possible, Duval, but if not, Duval, Eleanor Roosevelt. And if not, for some reason, we can't do Central, then we'll try.
Fair amount.
I was thinking Fama, yeah, Fama, something, yeah.
So we got the four, so since we got the four on the table, is it, do you want to narrow it down to two, or are we voting on the four and then just having preferences from there?
I think, yeah, well, I think we have two and two backup.
Yeah, right. So primarily, let's do Central and Duval, and if, and then have the other two as backups, one in the south and one in the north. Okay, so that's, I guess that's the motion on the floor?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Is that, well, someone wanna make that, and one, one by virtual?
Yeah, and one Zoom.
So that's the three meetings.
Madam Chair, I was just looking at the board calendar. It looks like we have January twenty-seventh and February tenth. Would there be a, so there'd be a third date we need for the virtual one as well, correct?
Yes, it would be. I think because it's virtual, it may be easier for us to put a virtual dated in and then to actually have the co-ation in. How, I mean, do you guys wanna pick a virtual date? I'm being honest with you guys. I mean, wintertime is cold outside. A lot of people don't like the cold, come out so much. Let's see, that's like three weeks in between each others, and we normally have them one week after another. I think it was a week break, right? So we can do it in between one virtual and then the other. So.
So if I heard the dates right, you said January twenty-seventh and then February tenth, so the week between would be February third.
Yep.
Great. For the virtual.
Yeah. Is that good for everyone?
I don't think it impacts this, but that is, schedule is an early dismissal day for students. It looks like for professional development. But I think if this would be the evening, I don't think that will impact anything.
Nothing on the board, meeting calendar there, even.
Okay, so I think that would be a great date. Parents will have a chance to get home, have their kids ready for dinner and be able to get ready on lessons, to teachers be able to be, go through their professional development, even if they want to participate, they have time to participate, because it's on Zoom. We'll call in however we can set it up. Is that fine with everybody else?
I'm okay with that.
What, I'm sorry, what day was that again? Was it the twenty-third or twenty-four?
So the twenty-seventh is gonna be the first, twenty-seven for the first in-person, the February third date is the virtual one, and then February tenth is gonna be second in-person.
Okay, thank you. I was just jotting it down. I missed it. Thanks, yeah, no problem.
Don't worry, Dr. Faust said it's not gonna mess up you and Ms. Faust Valentine's Day. Plenty of time to get her some chocolate and flowers.
That's not enough. No. Preach, preach brother.
I know that's right. Okay, so I need a motion put on the floor and that we have take these dates back to the board and.
I don't even know how to word the full motion, but.
May I have a motion to approve? But first of all, can I get a motion? Wait a minute, we already determined, so we, we had already determined we're gonna have two, I'm right. I'm reading over. I used to think, ah, so first of all, I need a motion to approve the add the, the virtual one, because we had already approved two dates. So let's get a motion to add the virtual one.
Point of clarification, are we doing five to seven budget workshop, seven to question mark hearing in all three cases? They'll be the same format, or will the online Zoom one just be public comment?
It's a good question.
Um, that is a good question. I would have assumed that we can do the budget workshop session online as we did last year. We did one online where we.
We did both online. We, we had two, we did two instead of three, and we did it all online last year, so we can still do that same format if it pleases the committee.
Right, so we will have that as a Zoom workshop and right after the workshop, we go into the public hearing.
Okay.
Unless you wanted this meeting person and we. Yeah, I missed the free meal business. Yeah, I know me. Okay, so.
I'll, I'll put the motion on the floor to add the, the third Zoom meeting to the calendar.
Okay, can we get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we already determined the schools that we're gonna have it at, determined to meet. Okay, do we have to do a motion on the location, or we just bring that back to the board?
So you, you do the recommendation to, to bring it to the full board.
Do we need a motion to recommend this? Okay, so then can we have a motion to make the full recommendation of each of the items we discussed, which would be, as we stated, to have two in-person meetings. One would be at Central High School, the other one would be at Duval, one would be by virtual. We will also have backup of some reason if Central High School is not available, Fama Heights High School, and if Duval is not available, the backup will be Eleanor Roosevelt High School. And we have the dates up January twenty-seventh, February third, and February the tenth. And that would be for everything for the work session and the public hearing. So can I get a motion on that?
You got a question about the faucet. I don't know if it's from the switch out from Roosevelt to Duval or.
Yeah, I was just thinking now, and I'm sorry, I should have probably jumped in before. Duval doesn't have an auditorium, does it, do they? So would you hold it in the multi-purpose room?
Is that my school? So I really can't.
David, Mary, I believe.
Yeah, that, that's correct, that's correct.
Okay, so you were just doing in the multi-purpose room?
Whenever I've been to parent meetings there, that's where they've been, yeah.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that, because the other buildings have auditoriums.
Yeah, if it's, if it's easy. Point to bring up.
If, if it's easier, we can just pivot to Roosevelt, if that's easier. I don't know how.
Well, I always say keep it Duval. I mean, that kinda highlights, highlights the, the need.
Yeah, that's fine for me. That's fine for me.
Wait, out there, we can go back to sitting in chairs.
So I would like to move Chair Queen's statement. I don't know, do I need to rephrase the whole thing? Okay, so, oh, I'll move.
Can we get a second? David?
Second, second.
All in favor say aye.
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 There we go. Okay, thank you so very much. Let's move right along on this Wednesday evening. Okay, we have the three point two budget moments, and I believe that Mr. Herdman Smith, that's your Herdman Smith?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. For this budget moment, you had requested that we look at our employee benefits and specifically comparisons to some of our surrounding jurisdictions in terms of employee costs and district costs. So I will turn it over to Nick Venturini, our Director of Benefit Services, to run through a presentation on this.
And as she's turning over, yes, thank you so very much. I think it's so important. I heard several people say that Prince George's County Public School has excellent benefits. And I just feel different as, I guess because I'm a young retired employee and I have a little better benefits, I see far more. And then I hear so many complaints from our teachers saying about time, they spend money on their medical and so many other things, their paychecks are small and they have to make up. So I wanted to actually, for us to be able to hear and see these excellent benefits that Prince George's County Public School have and what we offered in comparison to everyone else. So thank you so very much.
No problem. Good afternoon, committee members and all attendees. Is it okay if I share my screen at this point? All right. And let me know, can you guys see my screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So we'll be going over a public school benefit comparison. I'll touch lightly on the benefits offered by Prince George's County Public Schools and how they stack up against other public school districts in the surrounding areas, and then I'll spend a lot of time on the cost, its cost analysis. So with that being said, the current PG CPS provided employee benefits are, Prince George's County Public School District as well as all other Maryland Public School Districts provide the following employee benefits with various employee employer cost sharing. So these benefits right here are what PG CPS provides and all other surrounding school districts, and there's a cost shared. Employer kicks in some and the employees kick in some. More details on that on the following slides. So all the school districts in PG CPS offer health insurance, which include medical, prescription drug, dental, and vision. And that's standard across all other school districts. We offer a life insurance policy, which is an employee-based plan, and then opportunities for employee supplemental, spousal supplemental, and child supplemental. That's the same throughout the other school districts as well. And a retirement plan, which is a defined benefit pension plan. Defined benefit means simply that once you are vested, there is a defined benefit that you will be receiving for the rest of your life with COLA adjustments built in. And all other school districts have a pension program like that as well. In addition, Prince George's County Public School District as well as all other public, Maryland Public School Districts provide the following employee benefits at no cost to the employees. All school districts provide a EAP program. EAP is an employee assistance program specific to Prince George's County. You get up to all employees regardless of their medical or health insurance selection, they get up to four free and confidential counseling sessions. You get unlimited free consultations regarding legal and financial matters. And then there's referral services for those that may need childcare, elder care, pet care, and several other things. It's a, it's a wealth of knowledge that you can tap into any employee by using the EAP programs. And all other school districts offer an employee assistance program as well. Prince George's County and other ones offer a flexible spending account. They're often referred to as FSAs. Those are branched into two different areas. There's a medical spending account and an optional dependent care spending account to participate in. No cost to the employee other than the contributions they put in. And then there's supplemental retirement savings, which are called defined contribution plans. There are, all the school districts offer 403B plans and 457 plans. Those are called traditional plans. And then starting in twenty twenty-two, Prince George's County is gonna be offering a Roth option for each as well, a Roth 403B and a Roth 457 plan. Other school districts haven't jumped on board with that, but that's a good investment option for, for those that it may strike a need. So this next slide, here's, we're gonna go over benefit cost analysis, and this is just strictly what comes out of employees' paychecks. All the school districts offer multiple medical plans, so some of them offer up to four different medical plans. So just for the point of, of the analysis, we selected the richest, the most expensive and best offering of each school district had for price comparison. So this will be going over what a new hired employee in twenty twenty-one would have to pay for health benefits. The following slides are gonna present a benefit cost analysis of the following public school districts. We picked out Prince George's County, obviously, Baltimore County, Montgomery County, and Fairfax County. Two slides will follow after this. The first analysis will be comparing the monthly new hire employee costs for each district's richest medical, pharmacy, dental, and vision, and employee life insurance offerings. And then the second analysis will be comparing each district's total health benefit costs, which includes the employee and the employer contributions for new hires in twenty twenty-one. The percentage each employer kicks in towards those but cost of the benefits and any employer contribution towards post-employment retiree health benefits. And that being said, this slide right here is what comes out of employees' paychecks. And this is the first figure that employees typically look at when they're, when they're jumping on board. Before we jump into the cost, I just wanna point out that all the benefits provided are very similar. Now, it would take, it would take a big, long dissertation to go over specific benefit plans and the deductibles and copays and doctors allowed and exclusions. So this is just strictly the cost analysis. Let me get a little pointer going here, it might help a little bit. All right, so we'll just start with Prince George's County Public Schools. Medical and pharmacy for the individual cost for a new hire, two hundred and three dollars and sixty-seven cents a month. For family coverage, it would cost four eighty-seven, eighty-five a month. For Prince George's County Public Schools dental program, an individual cost, one, one individual, the new hire, twelve dollars and sixty-three cents a month for the dental program, for the family coverage, forty-one seventy-three. The vision benefits, an individual costs two bucks a month, the family costs four bucks a month. And then the life insurance offering by Prince George's County Public Schools, all employees get two times their annual salary in life insurance at no cost. That's funded by the employer at a hundred percent. This bottom line here to key in on, this is what the district, this is what the employer kicks in towards the benefits. So these figures on the top are twenty-five percent of the total cost, because you can see Prince George's County Public Schools, the employer kicks in seventy-five percent towards all benefits with the one exception of life insurance, and in that one, they kick in a hundred percent of the cost. Now, I'll jump down to Baltimore County Public Schools. They fund their, their benefits just slightly different, and you'll see that in just a quick second. Medical and pharmacy individual costs are two eleven twenty-eight for a new hire in twenty twenty-one. Family costs would be five sixty-eight forty-four a month. They fund their medical and pharmacy insurance at eighty-five percent by the employer, fifteen percent by the employee. So this represents fifteen percent of the total cost. Their dental plan, Baltimore had two very strong comparable dental plans. Both of them priced similar, so the dental plan was twenty-eight fifty for an individual, the family was seventy-four eighty-five for a family. And both plans were funded differently. I couldn't explain that, but one plan is funded at thirty-eight percent by the employer. The other plan was funded by forty-four percent by the employer. So these figures again up here are showing roughly fifty-six percent to sixty-two percent of employee funding. Vision insurance in Baltimore County Public Schools, the individual pays nothing, it's funded at a hundred percent by the employer. Family vision insurance costs five dollars and seventy-eight cents a month, that's funded by the employer at twenty-four percent. And then on to life insurance, the Baltimore County Public Schools life insurance, all employees get fifteen thousand dollars life insurance funded a hundred percent by the employer. Jumping down to Montgomery Public Schools, they, they fund their insurance similar to Prince George's County Public Schools, where all the funding levels are flat and consistent across all the benefits. Montgomery County Public Schools, an individual coming in in twenty twenty-one would pay one twenty-three seventy-eight for an individual, three thirty-one sixty-three for a family, those are monthly figures again, seventeen percent paid by the employee, eighty-three percent by the employer. Dental, seven thirty-two for the individual, little under eleven dollars for the family, same cost share, eighty-three percent employer, seventeen percent employee. Vision benefits, twenty-eight cents a month for the individual, sixty-seven cents for the family. Again, that's seventeen percent cost share as the employer's paying eighty-three percent. And the life insurance follows that same, same suit. Two times the annual salary is the life insurance benefit. Employee has to pay seventeen percent of that cost, employer covers eighty-three percent. So you'll see Montgomery County funds eighty-three percent across the board for all benefits. And to finalize Fairfax County Public Schools, individual rate coming in in twenty twenty-one would be one twenty-nine seventy-three. That's funded at eighty-five percent, fifteen percent by the, or that's a fifteen percent cost share, because eighty-five percent is being paid by the employer. Family coverage would cost five forty fifty-four a month, that's an eighty-twenty cost share, eighty percent by the employer, twenty percent by the employee. Dental is funded at seventy percent by the employer, so it's nineteen fifteen for an individual on the dental plan, forty-six sixteen for a family. The vision benefit is wrapped up in this medical program, so there is no, you enroll into medical, you get vision benefits, there's no additional costs. It's, it's, it's a bundled benefit. And the life insurance is face value, two times the annual salary, but the employee pays half of those premiums and the, in the, in the, in the Fairfax County Public School District pays half of those benefits.
Nick, if I could just interrupt for one second, I just wanted to point out one thing specifically. When we talk about the contributions on our side, the seventy-five percent is, because Nick's showing just here, the new employees. But when you get beyond eight years, our percentage does jump up to eighty percent. And the structures for the other ones do slightly differ as well. So just wanted to point out that this is really just for the new employees and doesn't include everyone.
Yeah, that's a very good point. This is specifically for new hires coming in in twenty twenty-one. As Chief Mike mentioned, for Prince George's County Public Schools that have eight or more years of service, it's an eighty-twenty cost share, eighty percent by the employer, twenty percent by the employee, and similar things in other counties. They're, they, they reward longevity, our employees that are long-term, they typically, the employer kicks in a little bit more towards the benefits. But to keep everything uniform, we just looked at new hires in twenty twenty-one, what they would have to pay in a, in a recruitment phase. Next slide. Now, this is gonna tell a little bit bigger story, because this is the total healthcare costs. This is, this is everything added together, the employer and the employee. So this is the total cost of the health benefits being offered. And it's very similar to the first one, but you'll just see larger numbers and then they kinda squish in and get very similar. Prince George's County Public Schools, the total cost of the highest, the richest PPO health plan is eight hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-seven cents a month for the individual. The previous screen showed the payroll deduction, which was twenty-five percent of that eight, fourteen, and again, the employer kicks in seventy-five percent of it. The family rate under Prince George's County Public Schools is one thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars. That previous screen showed twenty-five percent of that cost, because the employer's paying seventy-five percent. And then the dental follows the same path, a little over fifty bucks for an individual cost. Employer, employer pays seventy-five percent of that fifty bucks, employee pays twenty-five percent, which was reflected on the previous slide. A family total cost for dental coverage is one sixty-six ninety-three, funded by seventy-five percent by the employer. And then the vision benefits, eight for individual, sixteen for the family, the district pays seventy-five percent of those costs, the employee picks up twenty-five percent of that. I know what to point out, post-employment benefits, someone who retires from Prince George's County Public Schools and has twelve or more years of service, they get post-employment retiree health coverage available to them, funded at eighty percent by the employer, twenty percent by the employee. That's the benefits available for anybody with twelve-plus consecutive years, twelve or more consecutive years of employment when they separate service and begin drawing their pension. Baltimore County Public Schools, individual rate is eight forty-five, family rate's twenty-two seventy-three and some change. Again, that cost share is eighty-five fifteen, the fifteen percent was on the previous slide, this is the total cost of the healthcare. Dental, forty-six fifty-seven for individual, one thirty-four twenty-one for the family. This is that where they have those two dental plans that are very similar, just funded differently by the employer. The employer pays a little less than half of the coverage and the employee picks up the difference, which was reflected on the previous slide. The vision, Baltimore County individual cost is two dollars and four cents. That's not funded at all by the employer, and the family rate is seven dollars and eighty-two cents, that's funded twenty-four percent by the employer, seventy-six percent by the employee. Baltimore County's Public Schools for post-employment benefits is different than Prince George's County. They, they have separate tiers of coverage, so I'll just walk through this. Retiree coverage is subsidized for an employee that retires with zero to nine years of service, they don't get any. So I'll just walk through this. Uh, retiree coverage is subsidized for an employee that retires with zero to nine years of service. They don't get any subsidy towards retiree health benefits. And then an employee with ten to nineteen years of service, they get thirty six percent of retiree health benefits subsidized by the employer. And then you can just follow it along, twenty to twenty nine years of service, you get seventy six percent of those premiums funded by the employer. And somebody with thirty plus years who retires gets eighty four percent paid by the employer. Montgomery County Public Schools, seven twenty eight thirteen for the individual medical rate, nineteen fifty seventy six for the family. That's an eighty three percent funded by the employer, seventeen percent by the employee, reflected on the previous slide. Dental total costs are forty three oh eight for the individual, sixty three thirty four for the family. Same funding, eighty three percent by the employer, seventeen percent by the employee. Vision benefits, one sixty six and three ninety five, eighty three seventeen funding. And their retiree coverage is slightly different yet. They, they do it, uh, zero to nine years is no subsidy. Ten to fifteen years of service, you get your retiree premium subsidized forty percent. Fifteen to twenty years of service, you get those premiums subsidized by fifty percent. And twenty plus years, you get your benefits subsidized by sixty four percent. And just before I jump down to Fairfax, it, it's really important that you know to apply that figure to these figures. So like a retiree, uh, leaving Prince George's County Public School would have to pay twenty percent of this eight hundred and fourteen dollars. Their, their retiree health benefits cost about a hundred and sixty bucks a month. Where on the other hand, um, let's just take Baltimore County, someone with twelve years of service, uh, they're, uh, the employee's gotta pace sixty four percent of that figure. So they're way into the four hundreds right off the bat. Um, the retiree coverage seems to be the biggest variable amongst all benefits, other than employer contributions. Jumping into Fairfax County Public Schools. Um, they fund their plans, uh, they're a little bit differently again. We got the individual coming in at a total cost of eight sixty four eighty eight. Eighty five percent funded by Fairfax County, fifteen percent by the employee. The family rate's twenty one sixty two eighteen, that's an eighty twenty cost share. Dental is sixty three eighty four for the individual or one fifty three eighty seven for the family. It's a seventy thirty cost share. Vision, again, that was included in this, so there is no enrollment in the vision. For those who take medical and pharmacy, they automatically get a vision plan baked into that premium. And Fairfax funds their retirees even differently yet. Uh, the retiree coverage is subsidized by flat dollar amounts. They, they aren't by a percentage of the cost, so. Fairfax funds their insurance, retiree coverage is subsidized for a retiree with ten to fourteen years of service, they get fifty bucks off that figure there. For an employee had fifteen to nineteen years of service, they get a hundred and twenty five dollars off that figure there. Twenty to twenty four, you get a hundred and fifty off. And for those employees that retire with twenty five plus years of service, you get a hundred and seventy five dollars off that eight hundred and sixty four dollar premium. That's the cost analysis and total benefit, uh, total benefit costs throughout those big major districts. And then just, uh, point out, you'll see that the costs are somewhat close. And I know there's a variation there, but the total costs are, are very similar. Um, family rates spread out a little bit, but they're somewhat similar. The dental costs are somewhat similar. Vision is a little number, uh, they bounce around. The big variable that you'll see is what the districts kick in towards both employee benefits and especially retiree benefits. That's the big, that's the big variable in this whole, in this whole, uh, premium setup.
And if I could just, uh, add a couple of last things in, uh, Nick, if you stay on this slide, um. The, uh, retirees, I think where we should focus a little in our system, we are significantly more generous on our retiree side than we see in other districts, and that really is, uh, sort of, um, being subsidized by the current employee side. Uh, I would also just, uh, point out here that, um, as we talk about, uh, any potential changes to this. The, uh, percentage contribution from the employer and employee side are, uh, negotiated in our contracts with all of our labor partners. Um, so as we consider any, uh, changes going forward, we'll have to consider those going through, uh, our negotiation process. And, uh, Nick, I didn't know if you had anything else. Sorry, interrupted at the end there.
No, no, that, that, that's, um, that, that's spot on, um, uh, the employer contributions are set in negotiations, so, so that, that would take that kind of working to change that, but you were spot on with, with the retiree coverage. This is a very generous offering. And you can see it when even compared to the other large school districts. This is a very generous offering, which is great for uh, recruitment and retention. Um, I mean, that, that stand, stands out when I was on board and I said, ran away, oh my gosh. But keep in mind, this generous benefit here is affecting these figures here too. Um, uh, in the, in the private sector. Typically, they don't offer retiree health insurance. You can't wait to cut them loose.
Ask about you. I retired private and I got full benefits, so. And I'm union, so that's not true.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not saying a hundred percent, but I'm, I'm saying on, on average, um. Uh, it's a, it's a financial decision that employers make and whether they're gonna wanna keep costs down for the entire group or, or benefit retirees. It, it's a recruitment and retention policy.
I don't see any problem with the retirees and, and I do understand, because in all reality, you guys, it's subsidized, um, especially at a certain age, um, when they get Medicare. Um, then so it's a subsidized plan for real, even for employers. So it's, I don't, I'm gonna be honest, the reason why I was questioning this and why I wanted to bring us our attention. It goes back to the Medicaid and pharmacy costs, um, that, and I hear you guys when we say that a- after twelve or whatever years. It gets better and it should be, as they, you know, get older and all reality, we get older, we have more issues. So I'm glad it gets better, because they're going to the doctor, they more, they pay a little bit more co- copay. But the ones who are just coming on, and I think this is where it's hurting us at, so we have new employees, whether they're a teacher and they're making it thirty, forty thousand dollars. I know we get into the sixty eventually, but we haven't got there. A cafeteria working, because some of our cafeteria work, and I know because I did, their taxes are making fourteen under eighteen. This is hurting them. And so, um, our bus drivers, this is hurting them, because when they take this big chump, they're looking at this like, and these are our beginning workers, um, it is a big chump even compared to Montgomery County, and that's what I'm looking at. That they would have to pay that. We're talking sometime three hundred dollars a month. And people are still expected to pay their gas, electric, and water. So when we have to be com- competitive and comparison, and when we're talking about hiring teachers and wanting the best of the best, whether it's teachers, whether it's a bus driver, whether it's a cafeteria, um, worker, I just wanna make sure that we're being competitive with the pay and realize that little things like this will hurt their paycheck, because in all reality, they're not looking at the fact that they're making thirty or forty thousand dollars. They're looking at the fact, when they bring home their take-home pay, they can't survive off of their take-home pay. So they wanna, they gonna wanna go somewhere else where they can survive, where they can pay their gas, their electric, and more, getting to take care of their family, which I work in two and three jobs. And sometimes somewhere else is being, just like Montgomery County at this point, is being a little more generous to the new workers, um, which is giving them that little extra money to help them to be able to afford. So that was my concern, um, to be honest with you. And I think that, um, you know, as a school system, we may wanna take a look at that. Um, to see is, is this one of the reasons why we can't retain people? Is this one of the reasons why teachers go other places, um, within the DMV, whether it's Virginia or Montgomery County? Because maybe the benefits to them are better in the beginning. And as a person who's younger, as, as a young person, I'm not looking at retirement age right now. I'm looking at how can I survive with my family right now? And so that's what they looking at. So we gotta, you know, th- think outside the box and be diverse and think about the people that we're trying to right now to bring to the school system and to attract them and attract them hopefully so they can stay and they get, can get to that twelve years and that long time and invest in them. So that's why I was bringing up some of these concerns, and I can see where it may be a problem, um, in the salary range. Especially as I see that Montgomery County and Prince George's County, when we're real close to each other. Be honest, that's a big difference. Not only are we paying more money, and that's, I'm, I'm wondering, who are we paying this more money to? Because their benefit is three thirty one and ours is four eighty seven. Um, to me, that's a high. And then even the employee is contributing eighty three percent and we're doing seventy five percent. Is it that maybe we should be looking at another company? So these are the things that I'm wondering, are we doing as a school system? Who is responsible to look in and to make sure that they're bringing the best possible um, benefits, um, that will not only benefit us as a system, but also is more beneficial to our employees to attract the people that every day our, our staff that work with us, that work with our scholars every day. So that's what's my concern. So who looks into that and who do that comparison?
Yeah. Okay.
Sorry, I, I just like to point out that, uh, the numbers we're just talking about on this slide are the employer cost, so that takes into, uh, account the percentage contribution. If you look at the next slide, it's really the comparison of the actual full plans. And yes, uh, I'll, I'll let Nick go further into this, but we, uh, do regularly look at this and we'll be doing an RFP on the medical and pharmacy side uh, next year. Nick, I don't know.
All those, uh, all those comments are very valid, so thank you, committee member, uh, Ms. Queen, um. Um, these are big numbers. This is again comparing the best plans that each district offers. Each district offers one or multiple lower cost plans. Um, but the, but the, the presentation I provided was the best offering by each one. So there are lower ca- cost options. But again, with lower ca- cost options, there are usually typically concessions. Um, you'll see that the total cost of the, or, and then let me just rewind back, uh. Just please understand the difference between fully insured insurances, which, uh, a, a health insurance company monitors, pays the claims, and builds in a profit margin. That's fully insured. The, all these districts on this page and anybody typically with more than five hundred employees are called self-insured. And there's no profit there. You take eight hundred and forty five dollars out, or I mean, let, let me put the pointer on. You take out eight hundred and fourteen dollars out of everybody's check and that just goes in a bucket. And as the claims come in, you take that money out and pay the claims with it. So you price the plans according to what your membership uses. And the healthier the membership, the lower those numbers, because they're using less services, less big claims, less prescriptions. Less money is needed in that bucket to pay claims. If the membership gets ill or there's a lot of high-cost drugs, then you need more money in that bucket to pay those claims. There is no profit margin here that, that, though, what, what comes out of the employee and the employer's paychecks go one hundred percent to pay claims that the employees use.
Okay, I'm not sure if anybody else have any, um, other questions, any other board members, but I just have one question. So our, our federal and county government has, um, plans, because I know even some of our employees are part of the plans. Um, because I personally know some people, even though they work for the school system, they get better benefits and they don't have to pay that money and they need the money wi- within their check. So they get the county plan, but even looking at them and when they choose the county plan, they, I found that some of the county plan costs is a lot lower, a lot reasonable, even some of the deductibles, um, some of the things are free. So I'm just wondering, as a school system, since we're built in, um, with that same county, have we looked at to see the plans that they have? Um, to see maybe that we can get a better discount with the same plans that they give to actually the people who actually need plans through the county who does not have health insurance?
Yeah, I don't know about these county plans that you're referring to, or, or any PG CPS school district employees even being eligible for a county plan. I'm not sure if you're referring to the exchange plans, the, the quote-unquote Obamacare plans that came out. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, some of them, yes, some of them are eligible, because they don't, don't, they don't make, even though they're working for PGPCS, they're not making fourteen or twenty thousand, so they are eligible.
Yeah, there's.
We're not paying them that quality salary where they're able to afford, um, the he- health insurance. So they, it's a lot of people that we have working for our school system are eligible for them plans, because we're not at the fifteen dollar minimum wages and we're not paying them the quality salary. So I'm just wondering, have we as a school system looked at maybe in a cost saving for somebody's plans as we go forth? I know you say you, you next year, you're gonna be looking at the find the best possible plan to be able to save us as a school system, so it won't hurt our employees. The hurt won't be coming out of their pocket, so they can bring more money in their take-home pay and paying more money for benefits, but getting the same quality benefits.
Sure. Thank you for that comment, but with, with all due respect, uh, no PG CPS full-time equivalent benefit eligible employee is, is eligible for an Obamacare plan. Those plans are specifically for employer, people who are self-employed or people that have employers that do not provide benefits. And if you belong to an employer that provides benefits, all school districts, you are not eligible for those plans. There is one caveat, just so you're aware of that, that is if the health insurance premium that you see on, let me go to the previous screen. This two oh three sixty seven, if that monthly, there's one way you can get into those Obamacare plans if you belong to an employer that offers benefits. If the cost of the health insurance is more than ten percent of your household income.
And it is, that's what I'm saying.
Insurance is more than ten percent of the household income, um, and then that, then you'd be eligible for one of those.
Well, if they bring home fourteen thousand, they have a household. Come on, it's ten percent more than their household income. So, yeah. It is. So that's why I was just wondering, but I'm, we're, I'm still trying to figure out a way that we could actually save and people could actually bring home more money to make sure that we have the best plan. I, um, I do see, I do see where, um, it is more of a cost saving where Montgomery County right here, and I, and, and I did notice when you got right here, it looks like their plans are cheaper, three thirty one sixty three. But when you went to the next page, it looked like their plan is actually the same as ours nineteen fifty.
They're, they're contributing eight percent more towards their health insurance. So just for the sake of math, just so we can understand, let's round it up to ten. Let's say they funded the same as Baltimore. Ten percent additional employer contribution on this PG's, uh, employer, uh, on this number here is roughly eighty dollars. At ten, so, so if we raise, if, if Prince George's County Public Schools funded at eighty five percent or a little higher than the eighty three like Montgomery, that would be an additional eighty dollars towards the benefits, ten percent of eight fourteen. So let's go to the previous screen. You deduct eighty dollars off this two oh three sixty seven, you're right there.
Okay, that's what it was. Okay. Okay.
So that, that's, that's the number, but, um, and, and again, that's, that's negotiated by all. That, that's a different department and everything, yeah. And then there's a, there's a, there's a cost assigned to that. That's a big number. That's a really big number.
And I understand, we're not, we're not a profit company. We're actually a public school system, so I get it. Um, but I was still trying to make sure that we actually are able to offer our employees the best possible, um, the best possible savings that we can offer them, so it doesn't affect their take-home pay. Because I hear a lot of people say that, you know how much teachers make, and then they have to pay for their own health benefits and that. So I've heard that from a lot of teachers, from a lot of their parents. Um, and so I just wanted to make sure that we were doing the best possible cost savings, and, and I wanted it to be explained so everyone could hear it. So thank you so very much for that. Did anybody else have any other questions, any other board members? Let me do the gallery so I can see if somebody here to handle. No other questions? Well, that's it, Will.
Alright.
Well, thank you so very much. I appreciate it. That was really good, and I appreciate you explaining it, so we all can know.
No problem. Thank you.
So as we move right along, we have the CIP moment, three point three. The Blueprint School Phase Two Update. So, Mr. Fawcett, is that you?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, everyone. Me, board members, uh, general public and attendees. Uh, tonight, we are going to, for our CIP moment, we're just going to have, uh, Mr. Washington, who is, is the, the director of our, our infrastructure, uh, and development department. Um, give an update on our blueprint, uh, schools, phase two. Okay, and for those who don't know, we've already done phase one. That is the initial, um, alternative financing, uh, project that we're currently, uh, in progress, uh, with, with our six new middle schools. Uh, and we do have a phase two that's on the horizon, so this time I'll turn it over to, uh, Mr. Washington.
And I'm so glad, Mr. Washington, knowing, because, Mr. Jason, I was gonna call you. I really was, because I'm so sick of my husband ta- complaining about his car being dirty with these trucks constantly coming through. He keep washing his car and the dirt trucks keep coming through and dirtying his cars. And I told him, stop washing his cars. And so I said, I was gonna call you and say, oh my God, I'm hearing it's every week, he's complaining about how, and I say, but just think of the school that the kids are going to get. Stop washing your cars while these schools are being built. So I was just thinking about you. So how are you doing, sir?
I, I am, I am well, and I will make sure that I point that out to our, to, to our, uh, team members, uh, there, Walker Mill. Uh, but it's a pleasure to be here, uh, to provide an update, uh, as Dr. Fawcett said, uh, phase two. Um, the difference basically from phase one to phase two is that this one, uh, includes state funding. Uh, as part of the Build to Learn Act, there is a state. Uh as part of the Build to Learn Act, there is a state uh requirement of twenty-five million dollars per year for thirty years. Uh and so uh with that comes uh additional partners, uh Maryland Stadium Authority uh and the Interagency uh Commission on School Construction uh will be partners of the second phase of schools. Uh where we are right now, um yesterday, uh the council approved the uh the forming of a uh phase two work group, which is the official acknowledgement and start of of phase two. Um what that will look like will be the creation of a work group and a task force uh that will start uh working through uh the EFMP uh the and cycle one schools uh to uh determine uh the the next uh scope, scale and size of the program. Uh and so uh the next step will be negotiating an um memorandum of understanding with the county uh MSA and IAC uh to outline responsibilities and roles uh as we move forward, uh as well as selecting uh the next uh tranche of schools. Uh we, as per uh state law, uh this uh process has to be done and finalized by July first, twenty twenty-four, to receive the state contribution. Uh and so uh it's a very tight timeline, uh and so we look forward to uh working uh you know aggressively with our state partners uh to to structure and frame up the uh um procurement and the solicitation. Um so I am, you know, I that that's where we are, um other factors that will play into this as we go forward. Uh as I said before, uh really will be uh just uh using uh cycle one and the EFMP uh as the as the foundation uh for the work group to get started. Uh and so so that's, I just wanted to make sure everyone had an update. Uh but the major difference with uh phase two and phase one is phase one is locally funded uh and was done uh um by PGCPS and Prince George's County. Uh and the second phase uh will have a state uh contribution component.
Well, thank you so very much, did anybody, um any of the board members um have any questions? And um for Mr. Washington or what's been going on and schools in the area, I mean, I can let y'all know that they've been moving a lot of dirt over here. Walk a meal, dirt going in and out, dirt going in and out. Um does anybody, and they, and honestly, they even got this little wet thing that comes after, they're trying to try to get the dirt off the street, so it won't be bad, so it's going, they moving it, they moving it there early in the morning, waking a retired person up.
You've got one question, Chair Queen from uh board member Boozer Struggle.
Okay, I'm sorry, board member Boozer Struggle.
Thank you, Chair Queen, um yes, it is uh exciting to see the movement on the the first schools, I want to thank you, Mr. uh Washington for your leadership, um so with this next phase with the IAC involvement, that to me is a real game changer of having to follow IAC construction rules, whereas in this phase, we certainly had more flexibility. Can you at this stage explain what you might think are some of the the positives and negatives about what what that will mean for the next phase?
Um well, that that that's actually very uh true, so a couple of things that, you know, we are looking at now. As part of the speed of delivery that we're utilizing for phase one, when we get review sets of construction documents and design documents, we have a requirement of seven days to turn around those documents. Uh that is going to be something that we're gonna have to work very hard with the state to be able to adhere to a a a timeline of returning comments, uh right now. Uh there is no requirement or or amount of days that they are, you know, that that they have to give us back comments for the usual CIP process, and so that's going to be one. Number two, as the law is set up, the IAC has final authority to s- to allow the selection of the schools that we have. And so one of the things that we have really extended to them is a seat at the task force to be part of this at the beginning, so that they understand, you know, how the school system is looking at the spaces, that it is a, you know, how we're coming to these decisions, instead of us making all of these decisions and then taking it to them for them to say, no, we have a problem, how'd you come up with this, et cetera. Uh but also to make it clear that this is a locally run program. We the, you know, this Prince George's County Public Schools, we know what we need and we know what we want. And we want your, their guidance and support with that, and we think having them at the seat as we begin this process uh will lead to, you know, a a a favorable outcome and a uh productive and efficient outcome. Um this is, you know, uh going to be, this is gonna be a very, you know, a yeoman's effort from everyone. Uh I will say that right now, uh it's it's uh, but I I think the the benefit that IAC will give us is as part of their process, before we can move forward procurement, we have to have uh identify, signed off on uh location-specific uh educational specifications for whatever schools we do. We, right now, we're doing that during our design process, so that would actually help us speed up the process, because we will have their sign off before we can even start the procurement process. And so there are places where their process will actually help us, uh because it's rigid and it's formed, and it will require us to get our ducks in the row on the front end, uh and so that is um how we envision this to work. Maryland Stadium Authority will be bringing in their capacity and expertise around the financing. While it's only twenty-five million dollars a year, we don't believe that they're bonding it or financing, they can ensure that we are getting the best financing piece and the financing deal as we go forward from any of the developers. And so so that that is how uh this structure has been set up and how we envision it to work. Um and you know, I I'm very confident that we'll get everybody on the same page.
I appreciate that update.
Thank you so very much, anybody else have any questions or comments? If not, all right, we're moving right along. Ms. Judy, Mika Mary, you join the meeting, I ain't even said nothing yet, you don't have nothing to say?
Want to say hello, and thank you for allowing me to join, appreciate it.
Okay. All right, so we've got to, if there's no other thing, this is almost the end of the meeting, y'all, we had our follow-ups and next step, so follow-up will be on for the good of the order, we already know the next step is tomorrow, we're gonna have a school board meeting and our next subcommittee meeting will be held on December eighth at five PM via a Zoom. Um you can always check the board page or Prince George's County Public School website for more information. But for the good of the order, did anybody have a for good, for the good of the order? Ms. Lisa, I didn't hear you say anything today, you've just been on a call and Dr. Coleman, y'all had a hard days today.
Busy days today, not hard, not hard, just busy.
There you go, trying to work on this budget.
All right, how you doing, Ms. Winston? That's right, work on that budget. You good.
Good evening, Chair Queen, how are you?
I'm good, I'm good, and Ms. Irwin, I guess she's really busy, she been out, there you go, how are you? I just wanna see everybody lovely face on today, well, let me close with for the good of the order, you guys. It is November, it is Thanksgiving month, and we have so much to be thankful for, even here at Prince George's County Public School. I'm very thankful, although you guys know I try really hard to make sure that our employees are happy, they getting every bit of dollar that they can take home. But I'm still very thankful that we're able to give them some sort of benefits that they're able to have, um and they're able to cover their family with, I'm thankful about, um definitely thankful about the fact that we do have new schools that are gonna be built that our children will be able to see them, even though it won't be till twenty twenty-three, but I'm thankful about the future where I see Prince George's County Public Schools will be going. And our kids will be much more excited and pleased where they get their education. So the we go into this month of being thankful, I just wanna say I'm thankful for each and everyone, and you who have taken the time out um to attend this meeting on today and to continue to do what you're doing, work hard as you are in your busy job to make sure that everyone is not only Prince George's County Public School proud, but our scholars are getting that we're giving them all and we can doing the best that we can to make sure that they're getting the best education they can, so I just wanna say thank you to each and every one of you um for taking the time out, for being here, thank you to the public, for anyone who's out there listening, and we hope that you guys are having a thankful month and a thankful day and being thankful for for anything and everything. Um so this time, if no one else had anything else to say, may I have a motion to adjourn? I know y'all don't want. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, so I will see you guys on tomorrow at our regular board meeting in person, and we'll be to give each other some that, have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.